I want to call the August 19th zoning board meeting to order. Let me call, roll please.
Okay. Ms. Chester?
Here.
Mr. Cho?
Here.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Ms. Yutman?
Here.
Mr. Warrenbrum?
Here.
Mr. Weiskopf?
Here.
And Mr. Welch.
Here. We have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Hearing none. Now take a moment to approve the minutes.
Okay. Those of you that were here on the very last page, I wasn't here, but I read these things all the way through and it appeared to me that Chairman Armstrong was here for the entire meeting except for the adjournment where it says Chairman Welch adjourned the meeting. Do you have any recollection of that? Or is that just a misprint?
I must be mispriced.
I think so.
Yeah.
Or a coup. So then on page 11 of the minutes, I would move it where it says Chairman Welch to make that Chairman Armstrong. That's all I saw that was really, of course, I wasn't there, so.
I don't think that has to be seconded.
Is that all seconded?
All right, it's been moved and seconded. We have a change to the minutes to reflect that Chairman Armstrong adjourned the meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed by the same. That motion carries. Then the minutes will be approved and filed. Are there any written communications?
No.
All right. Any continued public hearings?
There are none.
All right. At this moment, we'd like anybody who thinks that they may want to speak before the board to stand, please. Anybody want to speak? The petitioners for either petition do not want to speak in favor? All right. Well, if you change your mind, I'll swear you in later. All right then. Then we'll call for hearing then, ZBA 2015 Minor 02. Let me have a staff report for that, please. Before you start, can we do two and three together? Then we'll also call for hearing ZBA 2015 Minor 03. Staff, please.
Good evening. So these are two related cases and they're two minor variances for a property that contains a duplex at 2510 South Vine Street. This is in the R3, single and two-family residential district. These variance requests are to reduce the minimum lot size from 4,500 square feet to 4,053 square feet and to reduce the minimum lot width from 40 feet to 34.1 feet. The applicant would like to split this property into two separate lots and these variance requests would allow that to take place. If you look at Exhibit A, which I'll pull up here as well, there's the existing land use map. You can see the property highlighted in yellow. It's located on South Vine, just north of Windsor Road and just north of Meadow Brook Park. It's surrounded mostly by single-family units and other duplex units going north along the east side of Vine Street. The property itself contains a duplex that has two condominium units. So as I mentioned, the applicant would like to divide the lot so that each unit is on its own property. And these variance requests, if granted, would not alter the existing building or the property lines between the existing lot and the adjacent lots. Now due to, as you can see, it's a slightly odd-shaped lot, creating two lots that would conform to the requirements of the zoning ordinance would really not be possible here, so that's why these variances are requested. So I'll just briefly run through the variance criteria to conclude my report. So number one is that the proposed variances would not serve as a special privilege because these variances are necessary due to special circumstances related to the land or structure. As I mentioned, there's an odd-shaped lot that would be impractical to split into two lots that would conform to the zoning ordinance. And it appears that the other lots, the other duplex lots along Vine Street would be able to be split into two lots without requiring variances. So this really is a unique lot and a unique case in the area, so it would not serve as a special privilege. Number two is that the variances requested were not the result of a situation or condition that was created by the petitioner. These were developed as duplexes prior to the petitioner acquiring the property, so this was not created, situation created by the petitioner. We don't feel, for criteria three, we don't feel that the variances would alter the essential character of the neighborhood because it wouldn't be altering the building or the outer property lines. Number four, again, there's no changes being proposed to the building or the number of units or anything of that nature, so we don't feel that it would cause a, sorry, that it would cause nuisance to adjacent properties. And finally, number five, we feel that these variance requests do represent the general minimum deviation from the requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary to accommodate the request. So that really concludes my report. The ZBA has a few options pertaining to these two cases. You can approve the variance requests based on the findings outlined in the memo. You can approve the variances with certain terms and conditions, or you can deny the variance requests. Staff would recommend that the ZBA approve the variances in each of these cases. That concludes my report, and I can take questions if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions for staff?
I do.
Go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
I have no problem with this, but it is a condominium and now it would be like one of those zero lot line duplexes?
Yeah, that's correct.
And why would you want to change that?
I think they would just like to be able to sell the lots and the units individually so that each unit would have some, a lot associated with it.
Oh, as opposed to a common element?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay.
Other questions?
Okay, I'm confused by, well, first of all, it's just, if I own a duplex, I have plenty of land, I can just split it by right and make it this, or do I have to come to the city for some procedure to do that?
If it would meet the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance, then you should be able to split it into common lot line dwelling units.
A subdivision would be required, but it would be fairly minimal.
Okay, then that's kind of standard then. Okay. Then I'm confused with the way the, with the request, the actual language of the ordinance is, because if we grant these, we're creating two properties. So are we creating a 2512 and a 2510? Are we creating a 2510A, a 2510B? And both of these, both of these variances relate to 2510A. That's correct, right? 2510B is the bigger, the lot to the south, proposed?
Yeah, it relates to the northern, so the northern lot is the only one that would require variances. The southern lot meets the minimum requirement, so that wouldn't require any.
So I guess what I'm asking is, is it specific enough, just saying that the way it's written here, 2510, are we, you know, is there going to be a 2512? I don't quite understand how that works.
The applicant is here and could probably address the addressing more specifically. It's my understanding that it's the A and B addresses now, and that's how it would remain.
So would we want to, where we say create a lot that is 4,053 square feet in area, would we want to make that at 25,010A? Doesn't matter?
I would want you to double check that A is the right lot, but.
That would be smaller.
Then that is technically accurate, then, yes.
Okay, well, I don't know how technically accurate we want to be there. I mean, if we can leave it the way it is, that's fine with me. I just thought that you would want to delineate the difference there, because to me, it doesn't tell me which lot that, we're changing to 4,053 square feet, right? Okay.
Are there any other questions? All right, at this point, is there still anyone who wants to speak in favor of this request?
Do you swear affirm that your testimony would be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
You have to sign in as well.
My name is Bill Craig. I'm with Remax Realty Associates, and I'm the listing agent for the two units that Carol Westerman has at 2510A and B, South Vine Street. And when her family originally bought the properties, they were a duplex, and then they converted them to condos a number of years ago. The family's down to the point that they're ready to sell both units, and we've come to the roadblock that financing for a two-unit condo, it's not impossible, but it's extremely difficult to get. It's been two family-occupied units, so there's no homeowner's association, there's no condo fees, there's no budget. There are, they have the rules that they had to have when the condo association was developed, but it's just been mom on one side and the brother on the other side. We have a buyer in place, and a requirement of her financing is that it has to be a zero lot. The lender will not finance it as a condo. So, and we're seeing this in the industry more and more, just with a lot of the changes in underwriting guidelines. And for condominiums, more and more condo complexes have gone from owner-occupied to a higher percentage of investor-owned properties, and that creates heartburn for lenders. So I hope that's helpful and be happy to answer.
Anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
I don't quite understand why you, it's difficult to have a mortgage for a condo.
I don't either, but I do. It comes down to lenders, for this particular one, because there was no budget, no homeowner's association, because it was occupied by family on both sides, to sell this loan on the secondary market, Fannie Mae, and they want to see this type of documentation in place. It's a real challenge. I mean, Joanne can probably speak to that as well. It's a real challenge.
One of the things that goes down with homeowner's association when you have a lot of rental property is that nobody wants to fund the homeowner's association. So, you know, deferred maintenance doesn't get done, and it's a problem.
It is.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this request? Anyone want to speak in opposition? Any further questions from the board for staff? Any further discussion? And I think it's, at this point, call the motions.
I want to try to say this. I don't know how to say it. I move that we approve ZBA 2015-MIN02. Can I add the other one? And ZBA 2015-MIN03, a request by Carol Westerman to grant a minor variance to create a lot of 4,053 square feet, and a minor variance to create a lot with a street fundage of 34.1 feet at 2510 South Vine.
Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Call for vote.
Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Forgive the pronunciation, Ms. Yutman?
Yes.
Mr. Warrenbrum?
Yes.
Mr. Weiskopf?
Yes.
And Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yeah, motion passes. I will next call for hearing, CBA 2015 Major-08. Let me have a staff report, please.
Okay, so this is a major variance request for a property at 701 East Elm Street, which is on the corner of Elm Street and Anderson Street. According to the Urbana zoning ordinance, corner lots such as this lot have one front yard abutting each street, so there's one front yard on Elm Street and one front yard on Anderson Street. This is a, I'll pull up the land use map here. So this is, it's a narrow lot. It's 54 feet wide by 136.5 feet deep, and it has an existing driveway along the eastern 10 feet directly abutting the neighboring property to the east. Now, the applicant would like to build a garage and a breezeway behind her house on the southwest, to the southwest corner of her house, which would encroach into the required 19-foot front yard setback along Anderson Street. The house currently encroaches about one and a half feet into the front yard setback, and this garage would extend an additional 12 feet beyond the edge of the house. So this request is for a 13 feet six inch encroachment into the front yard setback. The breezeway that would attach the garage to the house would be along the same line as the house, so that would encroach one and a half feet into that setback. The applicant requests this variance because she would like to build a garage, but she would also like to maintain the usable space behind her house. She'd like to keep the views from her back windows, which you can see in Exhibit E. And she would also allow, or like to allow for convenient access to the house from the garage, especially during winter months, so she wouldn't have to shovel so much snow if the garage were setback further. Along the west side of this property in the city right-of-way, there are also four city-owned trees, which include, the two trees, the two northernmost trees are old, mature, well-established black walnut trees of high value. And the approach to the garage, let me, I'll pull that up so you can see that. The approach to the garage is proposed to go between those two walnut trees, and it's the opinion of the city arborist that the footing for the, let's see, where's that at? Okay, there we go. So the approach to, if you all can see that, the approach to the garage would come right between these two walnut trees. And the city arborist thinks that that would cause some damage to the roots of the trees and could cause some damage to the health of the trees. So the arborist recommends that, if granted, the applicant pay a fee to the city in advance of construction for the potential damage that this may cause. The applicant has agreed to pay such a fee. This property is located in historic East Urbana, and it's surrounded mainly by single-family homes. To the south is a lot that's, that the western part is open, and then there's an apartment building a little further to the east. The comprehensive plan defines this area as historic East Urbana and identifies some strategies for neighborhood stability, which include preserving the unique character of the neighborhood, improving the existing infrastructure, and improving the existing housing stock. Construction of a garage behind the house would certainly improve the existing housing stock by adding value to the home and to the property, which would be consistent with that improved existing housing stock point. But the construction of the garage and the approach are also likely to, as I mentioned, damage those trees, which may affect the character of the neighborhood. And it could also affect the, some of the green infrastructure that trees provide in terms of air quality benefits and stormwater benefits and the like. So really, the two main issues with respect to this case are, first of all, the variance request itself, and then the issue of potential harm to those trees. The variance request itself, with respect to that, the applicant has provided a really thorough report, which you have in Exhibit E, which outlines the various site plans that she considered prior to making the request for this variance. And really, to meet her goals, she feels that the current proposal that's in front of you is the only one that would make sense. And given the narrowness of the lot and the requirement for this 19-foot front yard setback, it really doesn't appear to staff that other site plans would be able to meet the desires of the applicant. Also, in looking at the surrounding neighborhood, we feel that allowing a garage to encroach into the front yard would not be out of character for the neighborhood. I looked at the surrounding neighborhood, and there are 47 corner lots that are also zoned R3, and at least 24 of those appear to have at least one building that encroaches into a required front yard. And then five of those lots also appear to have garages that encroach into the front yard setback. So we really don't feel that this would be out of character for the neighborhood. With respect to the potential harm to the trees, as I mentioned, the city arborist had some concerns over the garage and the approach causing some damage to the health of the trees. And the arborist estimated that about 30% of the trees, of each tree's root system could be affected, and he has suggested that compensation be provided for 30% of the value of each tree. That total comes out to $3,417, and as I mentioned, the applicant has agreed to make that payment before constructing the garage and the approach. I'll run through the variance criteria quickly. So for number one, the proposed variance will not serve as a special privilege. This property was platted, and this house was built well before our current zoning regulations were in place. It's a narrow lot, and the positioning of the existing house and the driveway really make adherence to the zoning ordinance difficult, if not impossible, to meet the applicant's goals. And we don't feel, and as I mentioned, there are other houses, many other houses and garages that do encroach into required front yards in the area, so allowing this variance would really not be a special privilege. Criteria number two is that this request was not the result of a situation created by the petitioner. Again, this house was platted and, or sorry, this lot was platted, the house was built well before the petitioner purchased the property, so it's not a situation created by the applicant. Number three is that the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Again, plenty of other houses, plenty of other lots that have encroachments into required front yards. We do want to point out that historic East Urbana does have many mature trees, so we would like to ensure that proper care is taken to ensure that, if granted, this variance has minimal impact on the health of those trees. Number four is that the variance will not cause a nuisance to adjacent property. Right now, the main auto access to the property is a budding, is right next to the property to the east, and this would shift the main access to Anderson, which appears to be more of a side street and a less-used street. So that would likely reduce the nuisance effect on the neighbor to the east and perhaps to others in the neighborhood. And the final criteria is that this represents the minimum deviation from the requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary to accommodate the request. And while it may be possible to build a garage that would meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, the conformance to the zoning ordinance would really reduce the usefulness of the property for the applicant and any future owners. So we feel that this is a, sorry, so this would represent a minimum deviation. That concludes my report. I can answer any questions. The applicant is here, if you have any questions for her. Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
Go ahead.
The way this is drawn, is there an alley separating these houses from the southern lots?
Yeah, let me, there's a former alley, and I don't, I'm not sure if it's actually a vacated alley, but it's certainly, there are certainly no, bear with me for a second. There's certainly no, there's no pavement there. There's no gravel there. It's all grass. And one of the goals of the applicant is to have the garage close to the house, again, so that she wouldn't have to shovel a really long walk from the garage to the house. So if she were to place, say, a garage back off of the vacated alley or the existing right-of-way, whatever that is, it would be, it would be a long walk to the house, to access the house, longer than is currently, than is, than she has currently. So I think that was, that was one of the scenarios she looked into and didn't feel that it met her needs.
Okay. Can you give me a refresher on how you figure out what the right-of-way measurement is? Because, I mean, to me, it's the sidewalk divides, but here now, the sidewalk goes around the tree in question. Is that correct? So is it a measurement from the center of the road, or how does that actually work? And is it different for each neighborhood?
I mean, the right-of-way can vary, and this is sort of a weird spot, because you're right, the sidewalk does go around that tree. As best as we could tell, we just go by the lot lines that we see according to our maps and according to the, we do have right-of-way files from Public Works that we go off of. So it looks like it's to the east of there, but absent, absent of actually getting out and surveying, I don't know if you can get a totally accurate representation of the lot lines and where the right-of-way starts or ends.
So way back when, they came and they divided these blocks, and then they had a block, and then they divided lots in the block, and then the difference that was in between was for the road, and then they kind of split that.
Hmm.
I'm not sure. This was platted a long, long time ago.
These maps don't show the dimensions, but different streets have different widths.
Right.
And my understanding is it's at the center of the road to the sides, but the sidewalks sometimes are not. And the, the right-of-way goes to the other side of the sidewalk, and it's sometimes a different amount. Because, you know, the...
So each property owner doesn't really know where the right-of-way is then, I guess?
Well... Well, if you've got pegs, I mean, survey markers, you can figure it out. Like, I know that on mine, it was surveyed, and there's a peg, and the peg is about, you know, about nine inches inside the sidewalk. And, you know, you always thought it was just to the sidewalk, but not necessarily.
Well, there's streets that don't even have sidewalks, so...
Right.
I just have one question. Was the original intent of the alley as a driveway, I mean, where people would drive up to their homes?
I'm not sure. I mean, this, this part of, of town was, was subdivided so long ago. I assume it was probably for access to, you know, to the rear of the properties, but...
They delivered coal, garbage, you know, milk.
Oh, it really wasn't meant as the place you build a garage and then you drive your car?
Well, some of them, but, you know, when they, when they planted these, people didn't really have cars or garages. I mean, this is a really old, this is the old part of town that was platted before the turn of the century.
But I think if you come in from Weber Street, the alley is still there for the first three houses, and then it stops for the last three houses. It's all grass. I think that you can access that alley for the first two houses at least, as I drove by it today. And I can't tell about that one.
People fight, people fight about this stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, Kevin?
Yes.
In, in the report, in, is it on?
Yeah.
In the report, did it say that one of the trees was sick, or was deteriorating? Or did I misread that?
I'm not sure. There, there may have been, I, I don't think in my memo I put anything about that. I'm not sure if, if what the applicant provided, if there is something about that in there. But I think, you know, our, our arborist feels that these trees are, are pretty valuable, so...
And also, I guess the question for the applicant is, there's currently a driveway on the side of the house?
Yeah, there's a driveway along the, the eastern part of the house, and it's just about ten feet wide, and it goes right up against the, the neighboring property and the neighboring fence.
With, with the new garage, will that continue to be used, or will that kind of be replaced as long?
So the new, the new garage, initially, the applicant had proposed to do a, a two-car garage, but, but she scaled back her plans, I think, to, to help meet some of, you know, some of what city staff was, was requesting. So I think she'd be using that for, for a second car, but the main access would be, especially during winter months and such, would be coming off of Anderson to the garage.
Thanks.
Any other questions for staff?
Just real, real quick. This might, Kevin, this might not be for you, but this might be better for Michael Brunk, but the value of the trees, calculating the, having them pay the thirty percent of the cost of the projected value of the trees, I'm just curious, how do the trees get that valuation? It's, yeah...
Yeah, there are, there, I, I looked over Mike's shoulder when he was, you know, when he was accessing the, when he was looking at that, but it's, there's, there's a program that, that we have, and the city has an inventory of all, all city trees, and based on the species and the health of the tree, and the, the age, so the diameter of, you know, of the, of the trunk, all that goes into it, and then a value gets kicked out, so. And it's, it's a value based on things like, like the green infrastructure benefits, like the stormwater retention and air quality, but I think it, it goes beyond that, too. So I am no arborist.
Right.
Correct. I'm sure Mike could answer that much better. But if, if this does get passed on to City Council, Mike will be there to, to support me, so if there are questions of that nature, he, he can field those.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Again, I would make this opportunity available to anyone who wants to speak in favor.
Do you swear to the best of your ability that the testimony you gave would be true and accurate? Thank you.
Well, I was hoping that my long, extremely long report would be enough for, to cover all the questions and stuff, but...
It's your name, though, I think we know who you are.
Okay, I'm Lori Garrett, I'm the applicant.
Thank you.
And there were a couple of things that came up in your questions that I may be able to address, and what Kevin said in terms of the valuation of the trees is true. I wish there was something in the formula that would take into account, these are black walnuts, they're hideous trees, but they're very valuable, these trees are gigantic, they're terribly messy, but I have a real, and I explained to Mike, I have a real love-hate relationship with them, because they are gigantic. And I'm, my hope is that they will survive. In, in terms of one of the trees being ill, there's not a matter of one of the trees being ill, one of the trees did lose a branch earlier this season. Black walnuts are notorious for dropping branches, not, because certainly if they're diseased, they'll do that, but you'll have what appears to be a totally healthy branch that just suddenly one day, boom, crashes because of the weight from the walnuts. And the one on the north is the largest of the trees, it's the one with the highest value, it's the one that also has a very large branch extending over my house at some height, that has had things pruned off in the past, so all the weight is out at the end of it. So what you may be thinking of, as I made reference in my report, the fact that that one branch is a threat to my house, which Mike had pointed out as well. At one point, when he and I were talking, we were debating, should we decide we're going to sacrifice one of the walnuts and then do everything to save the other one, or do we go right between them and hope for the best? And then, when he left, he said, you know, you've given me some things to think about. He asked me to put flags out where I thought the driveway would be, and I did that, and he came back and looked at it and decided that this would be the best option. So the trees are both in, in pretty good shape, and one of the issues we really don't know when it comes to doing this is looking at the base of the tree and seeing where the main roots go out, they disappear very quickly. And the one to the south, because of its, the one to the north is the one where the sidewalk comes around it. On the front of my property is a maple that's on the city property, that sideways, that, that sidewalk comes inside of it, so none of my sidewalks are, are really straight in that area because of the trees. But the walnut on the south is actually, the trunk is being cut into, the tree is growing through where the sidewalk is, so it's right up against the sidewalk. But what we're thinking, those trees, as long as they've been established, we know they have roots all through the neighborhood, and so it's really a, a best guess, based on where this is going to be plotted, how much of the roots may be damaged. Then what Mike pointed out is that if the soil is, is the loose loam, they may be very deep, and it may not damage them as much if we don't actually cut through them, but then you have the issue of the surface root. So we spent well over an hour discussing all the pros and cons about that. I also have a, a huge tulip poplar on the front of the property that is just inside of the right-of-way, so it's, it's on my property, but that tree's not going anywhere, and it dwarfs these two walnuts. I've got twenty-three trees on my property, I've planted half of those since I've been there, so I definitely want to keep the trees going as much as possible. There was a question about the alley. I'm a lifetime resident of Urbana, and my parents long, and their family's long before me. My mom and dad actually owned a very tiny house that is two doors down to the east of me, up until I was two years old, and so they were amused when I bought this particular property, because you can see my old house through the backyard. But when they had that home, when they bought it, my dad was wanting to build a little patio, and the woman that owned the property across the alley, so this was 1962, asked him if he wanted his, her half of the alley, because at that time, according to the homeowners in the area, the alley had been vacated. When I bought my property, nobody could find any record of what had actually happened there, but I was told that if I wanted to use that alley, I would have to pay whatever fees and stuff and go through the city in order to have that reopened. So at that point, the impression I got was that the city was thinking that valley, that that alley had been vacated, and I know that to the west of me, that same alleyway area is there, but it's all grassed in as well. So it's a very sporadic alley through there, and certainly where I'm at, it's all mature grass and has been long before I bought the house in 2000. Yeah.
But who maintains the alley?
The neighbor to the south and I sort of do a duly mowing thing back and forth with And there's, there are utility poles and some other things back there, too, so it's really, if you're standing back there, where in anybody, because I know that one of you said that you had driven by earlier, if you look at where my, my fence is at the back of my yard, that's not the back of the property. The neighbor to the east had their property surveyed, and their fence extends back to the edge of their property. And then, so my, behind my fence is where I have my little mini orchard, and then there's a grassy area, and then the lot directly south of me is just all open. It belongs to the apartment, the people that have the apartment, with a little exception of a tiny corner, which used to be where the train tracks went through. So it's, it's a very strange little corner area there, but the lot directly behind me is all wide open with some very mature trees in there. And in my packet that I put together, in terms of sightlines, from my house, if you stand on the sidewalk looking to the south, when you cross Green Street, the sidewalk, so my sidewalk goes like this, when you cross Green Street, there's a house right there, and their sidewalk is over here. So the two blocks aren't lined up. Directly to the north, Anderson ends at Elm Street. So to the north, it's all properties, and if I look to the north, there's a house that has a big, I don't know if it's a machine shed kind of thing, but a very large oversized garage-type structure, shed, and the house directly to my north has a big two-car garage that is sort of right at the end of the, of Anderson. Directly to the west of me, the neighbor has a garage fairly similar to what I'm wanting to do, except mine, my sidewalk, from where the sidewalk is up to my fence on the west side of my yard varies because of the sidewalk moving around three to six feet, three to five feet, maybe about six. And then my garage front would be at least another couple of feet back from that. My neighbor across the street has his garage right up to his fence, and his fence is literally like within inches of the sidewalk, so his garage comes right to the sidewalk, and mine's going to be back, would be substantially back from that. So I'm just wanting a garage that I can pull in and get into my house nice and easy in the winter and stuff, because I do have some health issues in this last winter, digging out from the snow and ice and all of that was a bit of a chore, and that's, as I get older, that's just going to get worse, so. And it's a gravel driveway, which is never fun to try to snuggle, shovel snow out of gravel either, so that's, and that just happens to be, and you can see from the packet, I considered the other options. I have on the backside of my house, I have two bedrooms that have south-facing windows, and I have a breakfast nook that has a large double window that faces south, so any of the other options of trying to align it with the house, I'll be putting a garage literally directly in line with those windows, and I'll lose all that, and because of how narrow the lot is, I'll be taking up most of my backyard for a garage and not have the usable space.
Any, any other questions for the petitioner? Thank you.
Okay, the only other thing I must say, I want to thank Kevin for all of his assistance through this process, and also Mike has been amazing with helping me understand things and, and been very understanding about this, so I really appreciate that, and thanks for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor of the request? Is there anyone else who wants to speak opposed, in opposition to the request? Here, none, are there any further questions for staff? Any further comments from the staff?
I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals approve the request for a major variance in case CBA 2015 major oh-eight, and send it to the Urbana City Council with the following conditions. Number one, the site is developed in general compliance with the attached site plan entitled Proposed Site Plan, which is Exhibit E on page two. And number two, that the applicant agrees to compensate the city three thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars for the effects of the construction of the driveway and garage on the health of the adjacent city trees, and the applicant agrees to submit the payment prior to the issuance of any permits for construction of either the driveway or the garage. Yes?
Pardon me. I think you may have superimposed the four and the seven in that number that you read, or I did in my recommendation. I think it's three thousand four hundred seventeen, not three thousand seven hundred fourteen.
Okay, this says three thousand seven hundred fourteen, so you want four hundred and seventeen?
That's correct.
Okay, I would have changed that amount to three thousand four hundred and seventeen.
All right, with that correction, it's been so moved, do we have a second?
A second.
It's now been moved in second, and do we have any further discussion or question regarding the motion? Yes?
This, this might be not the appropriate place for this question, but if they determine that the, the soil was loose and that it's not, the development is not invasive to the trees, the money's still, she still pays the money? This isn't the time for that question?
Correct.
Got it.
That's not really our concern.
Got it.
Got it. Any other, any other questions or discussion? Call the motion in for a vote.
Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin, sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Yutman?
Yes.
Mr. Warmbrun?
Yes.
Mr. Weiskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes, that motion carries, and it would then be forwarded on to the City Council for their review.
When? September eighth.
At the September the eighth meeting. All right. Do we have any old business? Any new business? Any audience participation? Do we have a staff report? Study session? And having completed our agenda, we're at the point where we are ready for adjournment, I move that we adjourn.